Account warrants, gift acceptance from the White Pond Association Incorporated for[22.44][22.44]$201,690, the White Pond Management account. The Concord Carousel Scholarship Fund Committee of $6,649.68 to the Carousel Free School Scholarship Fund. We're grateful for both of those gifts. And one day special licenses both for the Concord Market at 77 Lowell Road. On the first of February from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., all alcoholic beverages. And on the fourteenth, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., wine only. If there are no objections, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Redd.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All is? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Town Manager.
Good evening. As Chair members of the Board, I just did submit yesterday unfortunately, a brief report for your consideration. I did include some information about a bid or a grant application that the planning department is working on to get some technical assistance to help explore the creation of three what they call business improvement districts, bids. And bids are, if you're not familiar with them, bids are, many cities have them, and they're basically districts that get set up. And there's different ways to capitalize them. Sometimes they're with, you know, an extra fee or something like that. And then there's a board that oversees that district to decide how that money can be used. And it can be a wide variety of things. I've seen bids do facade improvement plans, you know, signage upgrades, things like paying for planters, you know, flower plants or flower pots in summer, having somebody water. I mean, it's really to create enhancement specific to that district. I do want to note that in my report to you, I said that it was discussed within, or it was done with input with the Economic Vitality Committee. It was actually the West Concord Junction Cultural Committee. I had transposed, my meeting with Marcia, I had transposed those things, so I apologize. It should be the West Concord group, not the Economic Vitality Committee.
So, does it apply to Concord Center then, or?
Just West Concord.
No, no, no. There are three separate ones. It'll be Concord Center, I think the Deep Road District is the other one, in West Concord. And so, we're excited about the opportunity and hopefully we'll get it. There's, speaking of donations, Millet Savings Bank is donating $10,000 to the fire department very generously. That'll help us purchase additional thermal imaging cameras. So each vehicle that responds to an incident will have one on it. Right now, there's, I think we have, we have it on three vehicles, so this'll give us two additional vehicles covered. And that's really an invaluable tool that first-on-scene responders can use to assess a multitude of things, as I laid out in the report. And then, it's somewhat long, but I think informative. There's a residential electric vehicle rate study that was done. They did look at a lot of different MLPs, but we're one of, I think, three in Massachusetts that was referenced in the report. So, I think it's, it's good acknowledgement for the work that CMLP has done in this area. And I think it's, like I said, it was a very informative study, and it really shows that there's a lot of different ways to do it. So I think it's something that the, that the CMLP will be talking about more in the future. And that's it for me.
Are there questions for the Town Manager? Thank you, Stephen. Next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. I do have a few. First, just to remind everybody that tonight at 7:30 is the Town Caucus here in the public hearing room. And we will need to make sure we adjourn our meeting in time for us to attend that. Next, just a reminder again that the town election is March 3rd. And that's when we will elect the folks that will be placed on the ballot tonight.
No.
March? Not the 3rd?
That's the primary.
No, I think that's, I think that's primary. It's, I think it's the 31st.
31st. Well, I forgot to write a 1 after.
The 3rd is the state primaries.
Right, right, right. It's very confusing, yeah. Too many elections.
Tonight, a little later on, we will be discussing the warrant. And I just want to say, as a heads up, the purpose of the discussion tonight is not a substantive one. It is to set the order of the warrant articles, so that the warrant can be set and then sent off to the printer. We will begin discussing warrant articles probably at our next selectments meeting, when we meet on the 10th. It isn't really an article, but we're having a discussion about the Junction Village TIF issue, because we hadn't had a chance to discuss that before the warrant closed. And then there are the regularly scheduled public hearings later this month, and the finance hearings in March. Also, I want to say, because we're going to have a very busy time, that our next meeting, we have two important items to talk about. We're going to hear from the 2229 Reuse Committee. And we're also, as I've just mentioned, going to talk about the Junction Village TIF proposal that's come before us. I'd also say, because we've talked about it in our P3 partnership discussions, that Stephen and I will be meeting with representatives from the library trustees next Tuesday, the 4th, to continue our discussions of renegotiation of the agreement between the town and the library. And as I said, as soon as we have some kind of agreement between the two, we'll bring that back here to have a full public discussion of it. And the last item, when we hired the town, we hired the Town Manager, he wanted included in his, excuse me, his contract, a six-month valuation. That is after dinner, after a year. Well, we're coming up on it. And so, that's what we're going to do. And I want to hand out to the Select Board, and I've given Jeremy a copy, and you can post it online, setting, is instead of evaluation forms. I want to get these handed out. Yeah, one for, two more. And I get these handed out. The process I will use to do this, as I've distributed these to you, and what I'd like you to do is complete them, and then send your completed forms, or give your completed forms to Jeremy. What Jeremy will do will be to tabulate them all, and produce some sort of master copy, which he will give to me. What I will do is take the master copy and write a draft statement, right? I will share the draft with the Town Manager, so that if there are factual issues in there that need to be remedied, we can get them remedied. And then it will be an agenda item on a subsequent board meeting where we will discuss the evaluation, make any changes to the draft that I have written, and then we'll submit it to the Town Manager. We're also in the process of trying to, we want to capture input from various departments in the town. And I'm working with Amy to figure out a simple process, a simple and confidential process for doing that. So we essentially have a, you know, a 360, and giving the Town Manager as much as we can. So, no, those are my remarks. The next item we have.
Mike, I had one question. Next meeting, when we're discussing the TIF, who do you anticipate, or who have you invited to come in?
Both Liz, I think, is going to, Liz Ross is going to be there, our Regional Housing Officer, and Walter Rohanian from Junction Village.
And what about Wayne Partridge?
What about him? The assessor?
Yes.
I haven't invited him. I'm happy to.
I think he should be included, because those were some of our questions. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is about to place school committee vacancy on the ballot for town elections. As you know, I just mentioned, the caucus is this evening. A member of the school committee submitted his resignation to the town clerk. And so, we're within the various timeframes, so that if the Select Board tonight moves to put this on the ballot, the caucus that we will have in just a little while will be able to take nominations for a full three-year term, and take then separate nominations for the vacated term, which is a two-year term. So, I'm, it's open to comment or questions about that, if we have any.
I think that it makes sense for us to be able to put this on the ballot versus making it more confusing for the voters in Concord.
Correct. I agree.
Right. Like, I don't really understand what our other option is. Would we have another election?
I think the other option would be to pull, that the, the other seat would have to be filled by pulling papers, and, in other words, in a separate process, and then wouldn't be on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah, that, let's make it this.
Well, it could have been that way. If the resignation had happened after a certain date, we would have had to have another.
Right, right. But we have time.
Right, so let's do it the easiest, best way, yep.
I just have a question about process for the nominations. If, if people don't declare tonight, isn't there a period of time after this? There's another deadline by which they have to. So if there's not someone lined up tonight, doesn't mean that's not going to happen.
Yeah, we don't have enough people in the room, or whatever. Right?
Absolutely.
Just as it is always.
Right.
So, if there are no objections, I would entertain a motion then.
I move to place the following on the Tuesday, March 31, 2020 Annual Town Election Ballot. School Committee vacancy for two years, vote for one.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is the consideration of the Carbon Pricing Resolution, House 2810. I know there are some folks in the audience here who have come to, because of that article, is there anyone of the group that would like to talk? Okay. All right, well, we have this article in front of us. Do you have comments or questions?
Well, I personally think it would be in keeping with our, our position on sustainability, our environmental, our envision Concord goals, and our, and Article 51, to support this, so.
I just saw another person who I think is affiliated with this issue, so I'll ask again, if there's anybody who wants to speak on this matter.
Is it two resolutions? Sorry. Come on.
Please do.
Hi. Bouja Cookman, 94 Hubbard Street, and co-founder Mothers Out Front. Thank you so much for entertaining these two resolutions. Are you doing them both at the same time?
We're doing 2810.
Okay. It's out of breath. It, we very much appreciate you supporting these resolutions. This is really to show support to the state in areas that Concord has already led the way. And, so, Mothers Out Front has been working across the state with various towns to help move these forward, so. Excuse me, I walked here. So, anyway, we greatly appreciate you moving forward this, and it's something that's being done across the, across the state in different towns.
Right. Well, Janice does begin speaking before you came in the room, and saying what I think I would act as well, that this seems to be perfectly in line, and in keeping with other initiatives the town has undertaken. So I'll, for.
I agree.
Yeah, and not only that, but it's really providing a way for low and moderate income households to be included, so there's a component of economic justice. It's very well thought out.
And Senator Barrett, of course, our Senator of Support of Mothers. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board go on record in strong support of House Bill 2810, an Act to promote green infrastructure and reduce carbon emissions, and urge the legislature to pass the bill in the 2019-2020 session.
Second.
Let me present the discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As unanimously, all in all, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a review of the Town Manager's budget. Mr. Town Manager.
So, it's my pleasure to introduce, to present to you the Town Manager's FY 2021 Annual Town Budget. I want to commend the work of Chief Financial Officer Carrie LaFleur and her team in the Finance Department. There's a few things that are notable about the budget this year. I think I presented generally on most of the things, so I don't want to get too deep into it, and I think I've presented it a few times. I think one of the, one of the strengths of the, of the budget this year is that most of it fell into place fairly quickly. We realized there were factors that were going to enable us to meet the guidelines, and also be able to do some modest service expansions in key areas. We talked about those, notably the command staff change, the fire department, adding the land manager, consolidation of the facilities department, things like that. The summary of those things are, start on page 32 of the booklet that you have. And I just, I do want to caution that the book is a draft. Another notable thing this year is that it is a different format of the budget book. A lot of work and time went into that this year, and so I want to commend just a lot of formatting changes, and so we haven't really gotten through it all 100%. As you can see, it's over 225 pages, so we're still working at it. But I think it's, it's different than the prior budget documents. I know the, I know that Concord's budget had won the GFOA budget award. The format that this is based on is one that I've used in the past, which also has won multiple GFOA budget awards, so I'm confident that we will not lose that distinction by switching the format. One of the things that, one of the areas we talked about in Vision Concord with the resolution, I think there were a couple of key things from the budget and some of the decisions that we're making as a part of our recommendation that also carry forward some of the recommendations. One is the adding of the land manager. That was something that was specifically identified. The other was bringing on, maybe having an economic vitality position in the town. That's also something we've, we've put into the budget. There's also a number of goals with regards to the public facilities, and even though it doesn't talk about the facilities division, I do feel like the consolidation of the facilities, maintenance of all of our buildings certainly speaks to the spirit of that goal about being fiscally responsible in terms of our buildings, and just kind of having more of a master planning approach. As you know, we did do, we did complete the facilities master plan last fall, and that is, as we move forward into fiscal year 21, I think we'll see more report backs on options that we think could be viable from that. So we, we certainly want to keep, if not, some of the specific takeaways from the long-range plan, you know, have some of those, you know, easy, easy wins, if you will, but we also want to sort of maintain the spirit of it. One of the things that we haven't talked about in the budget presentations I've given them in the past is something that came up early on in our internal budget meetings, and that was, like, you know, kind of looking at the number of line items that are presented in town meeting. And I had kind of commented that that was a larger number than I was accustomed to seeing. And so, in preparing the budget and changing the format, Carrie and her team looked at, is there a way we could reorganize line items to more, better reflect how, how the organization actually operates? And it had the net effect of reducing the number of appropriation line items. So, I don't know if you're going to, if you want to hand those out. So Carrie, I'll take what you have to say. So the first one going around is the FY, is from the FY 20 warrant. This is the FY 21 draft. It basically takes 39 appropriation line items and consolidates them to 15. Like I said, it's something that came on early, it was a part of our discussion early Because I was, because I was working off of mostly Excel spreadsheets, and not the full budget document, I didn't focus on this in my presentations. And I will say, if the board doesn't feel like this is a change that is beneficial at this time, it would take us about 10 minutes to go back to the, the old way of doing it. But I wanted to give it to the board for consideration as somewhat of a, a change in approach, or a change in style really, for how the appropriation line items are determined. But like I said, we're happy to keep it the way it is. We just wanted to show what that would look like. As I noted in the past, this does meet the guidelines from the Finance Committee, and like I said, I think it's a sound budget, and hits a lot of the goals that I know, like, I saw on the plan and heard from the board during the year. Carrie, I'll turn it over to you if you have more to add.
Carrie, do you have any comments you want to add? First of all, saying congratulations. I think I heard a new title.
A new title.
Title. Terrific. Congratulations. And to your team, too.
And to the meeting approval.
Yeah. This is, you know, if anybody wants to know how budgets are organized into the depths of any way you could look at it, these budgets that sort of got put together for as long as I've been on here, whether this improved format or the other format, are so informative. It's really quite, quite impressive. Questions for the Town Manager? What, I guess the only thing, I'm glad we met the guideline, that's terrific. I'm glad you're comfortable with it. What couldn't we do this year?
What couldn't we do?
If the guideline had been a little different, or if we didn't?
I guess, I mean, there were certain line items we could certainly look at for enhancement. You know, there were, well, let me say it differently. There were a number of requests from the departments that we did not grant. Certainly in capital, we probably could have gone higher. You know, we had, the target is 2% to 3%. We hit it at 2%. I think, I think we're spending a good amount of money in making investments in the town's infrastructure, but could we have gone to 3% if we, you know, had more money to play with? Sure. I think what I want to remind the board that when we started off on day one of the budget planning process, we knew that there was going to be almost $300,000 less in transfers into the general fund from other funds. For, and I think it was primarily the transfers for the four additional firefighters in West Concord that was paid for by, is it the Muse? Yeah, those are developed, those are stabilization funds. And so that's gradually going to reduce, the general fund will eventually carry all of that. And there were a few other changes that we were ma, making. So, we started off, in a manner of speaking, $295,000 behind where we were last year in the general fund. But yeah, I mean, I think there was more requests we could have met. We could have expanded line items, like there's a, there was a, you know, hours at a, for a position, part-time position in the fire department that was requested that we didn't do. But, you know, the biggest thing in budgeting is balance, and balancing out all the needs of the, of the departments and the needs of the community, and making sure that we, you know, do the additions and subtractions we need to do to make sure we meet the guidelines. And, except that, really, most of that work was done by Carrie and her team, and so that's really where the art is in all of this.
What would be the downside of, like, if we kept the 39 line items, and we didn't go to the 15? What would be the downside of that?
So, the, the difference would be, right now, as the budget stands, if the Town Manager wanted to propose a line item transfer, that has to go to town meeting.
Right.
So, where, where we are reducing the line items, we're moving more divisions into certain line items, so there's more flexibility for the Town Manager. I don't know that that's a downside, but that's, that's the result of what is being proposed.
Yeah, I think what I would say is, just to clarify that, that what we're spending money on, and how much we're spending, is virtually unchanged, no matter which way you go.
Right, sure.
It just is, like I said, I think the way these are assembled really more, more reflects how the organization is structured, and it does give us some more flexibility during the year to, and I think everybody here knows those things, you know, expenses come, go up, go down, things happen during the year, and it's helpful to be able to have some flexibility. But like I said, it's not, it's, it's not a, the budget won't rise or fall on the number of line items we have. We've been, the town's been using 39 or so line items for, I don't know, probably forever. This was just kind of an idea that we wanted to throw out.
And this came out of the Invision Concord? Invision? In other words, what did the impetus for the consolidation come from?
This was more, this impetus was more, more what I was used to in my, in past budgets that I've done.
Well, it is a, it is a very significant difference between the way the town's budget is structured and the school budget is structured. And it's a school that has a great deal of flexibility in its funds, so I can appreciate that. Is there any loss of transparency, though?
Right.
I guess potentially, I'd have to know. I have to defer to Carrie. I don't know how many, I don't know how many times we've had to go back for transfers, like what the net, what the meaningful impact is.
So, we don't typically have to make budget adjustments at town meeting, but we do, through the year end, there's a provision under Mass General law that allows us in the last 60 days, with the Finance Committee and Select Board approval, to make transfers. And that's typically the process that we have followed, because, you know, these things are, they're appearing at the end of the fiscal year. So, the, that is a, a public process through two committees. This would make that work easier, and as, as Stephen mentioned, really realign the line items with the, with the departments that are overseeing them, so that they're all, they're all together.
Can I give an example of that? So, as you know, the town report and the town meeting documentation are all done by the Town Manager's office, in terms of the processing of it, and the ordering of it, and the procuring of those documents. That's a separate line item under the current structure, and so that line item would be a part of the Town Manager's budget under the realignment that you have before you. I don't know, I don't really know what the impact is on transparency, but it would, it's a thing that is, that happens over there in, meaning, you know, in real time. And so, like I said, it just, it was just something.
I'm correct, though, that any, any transfers that would be necessitated under, under any circumstance, but during that 16-day period will still come before the Finance Committee, and the Select Board, so there would be an airing of the why of it all.
Right, so in other words, this change wouldn't, wouldn't remove that?
Well, just to be, just to be clear, it would eliminate some of those changes potentially, because now, you know, we have 39, we would be going to 15, so it would only, if, if this was approved, it would only be changes among those 15.
The 15, yeah. Right, so it's, it's, if you want to move money from line item one to line item two, is that what you mean? That's in the last 60 days?
Yeah, so.
But within line item one, or within line item two, you have, you would, you have the flexibility, you don't have to wait for the 60 days?
On an administrative basis, yes.
Right, so the only one that's jumping out at me that, I, I like it, I think it's really good, but the only one that I'm thinking we might take some criticism on about transparency would be the legal services. And so, maybe we should just pull that one out separate again, or make a, kind of a big announcement when we do move money in there, either way. But I think it's really good to go to 15. That's, just that particular one right now is sensitive.
And I should say that, and as, this realignment was proposed back in like December, and I just didn't, I just didn't present it, so I don't want to make it seem like it's a, it's something we're trying to do now. It's something that John Ward doesn't, like, early in the year.
Yeah, I think I agree with Tara. I think I'd keep, given the circumstances, keep it separate, so there isn't any thought.
So 16 would be the number.
Right, just so we don't, you know, get criticized for some, you know, for trying to hide something, because we're not trying to hide it.
Any other questions of the Town Manager? Carrie?
I agree with what you, everyone said.
So, without getting down into the weeds, I just want to raise a question that presents some confusion, I think, for a number of people, and that is, when we look at the expenses that the Recreation Department incurs under the Enterprise Fund versus under the General Fund, and then there was some mention in the budget book about some interface now with the tourism and economic development, could some more light be shed on that in terms of how all that works?
Yeah.
Well, yes, but how it works?
Why certain, why there is assignment of some of those funds to the Enterprise Fund versus the general?
Versus the general fund.
And then, and then some comment about the intersection with the tourism and economic development?
So I guess, on the tourism and economic development and recreation interface, I'll defer to Kate on that, but obviously, Carrie can correct me if I'm wrong, but the general enterprise. funds generally are fee or rate based. And so, but they are supported, those functions are supported by people who are generally funded by the general fund. And so Kate oversees the recreation department, so a portion of her time is funded by recreational fees. And it's really an accounting measure that is standard practice, but that's how that, so the transfers in are to offset the costs to support the enterprise fund, enterprise fund.
Yeah, I mean, an example might be the PEG access committee, you know, the PEG access fund.
So PEG access, this year you'll see about $13,000 transfer into the general fund from the PEG access. And so under our license agreement, we can only charge to PEG things that are directly related to PEG and PEG services. And so that $13,000 equates to a small percentage, about 20% of the public information officer's salary. And so that is about the time that she spends on PEG as she's the acting executive director of that. Similarly to that, you know, 2% of, or 3% or something of my salary is charged to the BD Swim and Fitness because I oversee that operation. We don't, it's not dollar for dollar because, for example, tourism, I oversee that division as well. And we haven't seen that as something, it's a new endeavor. And so I think that there's some general fund subsidy that's coming from that. So effectively, if you wanted to get a kind of a big picture, you would take the enterprise budget book, which comes out some weeks later than, than the general fund and kind of mesh that together. And you'd be able to see the operations that sort of collect and raise money are really in those enterprise budgets. But then you would have to take those numbers and correspond them with the, with the transfers in and out from the general fund. So our treasury department, for example, takes in all of the revenue that's raised at the BD Swim and Fitness Center for people to pay their dues to be part of that. And so there's a certain level of service credit that we have to, we have to do that. Our HR department hires all of the tour guides, for example, and so that's a percentage of their time that's dedicated to that.
Thank you.
And just, just for the record, you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate Hodges, deputy town manager.
Thank you.
And the, and you may have already answered this, but I'll ask it again. The intersection between the rec. department and the tourism and economic development office beyond some recognition of your supervision time?
So as we have it right now, the recreation department is running the tourism operation through their revolving account. Moving forward, we had done that, just started obviously this year on a, on a three-year pilot program. And so I think when we get to year number three or approaching year number three, we would probably petition both to the finance director and the select board to have a separate, either revolving account or special revenue fund that is for tourism, meaning that we raise money or we generate revenues that we then put into an account where that is only spent for those. I think we have that with the farms, which we never had before. If you can recall, two years ago, we established revolving funds for the farms. Prior to that, we just put it in the general fund as leasing accounts. But if something happened and we needed to repair any of the farm buildings, we had to then use, you know, general fund monies to do that. And it didn't make much sense. It didn't give the town a true understanding of the operation of those farms. And so I think as we develop tourism and as we find success, which we will, we want to make sure that we're showing, here's the money that we're generating from that and here's what it costs to, you know, run that operation.
Just to clarify, the link in the budget between economic vitality and tourism is that the role of our tourism coordinator and the functions that, that, it's now Beth Williams, that she plays to coordinate, stimulate, manage tourism in the town are in many ways very, very similar to what an economic vitality coordinator would do. And so the, in fact, in the link between economic vitality and tourism is strong in envision conquered. So, but the, the economic vitality component, we're kind of elevating that visitor, that tourism coordinator position to an economic vitality. The difference is being funded by the general fund because economic vitality is a general fund function. And like I said, we're kind of in transition on this anyway. And so that was the link, is that tourism, which happens to be a function of the recreation department revolving fund, strongly linked to overall economic vitality. So that was, from a, from a recommendation standpoint, that was the link that I felt made the most sense.
And which of the 15 line items is that even in? Is it planning and land management?
It would be a little bit in the, I guess the town manager's budget, but then the, but then the bulk of it would be in the enterprise fund.
Revolving.
Revolving.
Oh, okay.
Which you haven't seen yet.
Right.
But you will.
Okay.
And you will love it.
All right.
Well, before you go, I seem to recall that there was a Mass. Municipal Association meeting this last weekend and that the town received an award. Would you like to tell us about that?
Oh, sure, yep. We received the Kenneth Pickard Innovation Award. And it is awarded to a or a couple municipalities every year for doing something unique and different to try to further governance. So Concord was recognized for our use of social media to entice people to want to get more involved in local government and specifically with regard to the Jarrow property, which is by probably my favorite project. And, and really what we did was try to, or we did, do a sort of a 360-degree tour, almost like Love It or List It, where we used social media, Facebook Live, Instagram Live, and sort of toured the property when there was a house there on it and said, you know, here's where we could put this and here's where we could put this. And then we also did Facebook Live for three of the different informational sessions that we did there for the strategic master plan. And that really was able to get people who were at the ball field, up the street with their children, to be able to be watching the baseball game, but also be at Jarrow virtually. And we had then, by the third meeting, kind of set up something where people could then comment in real time. And we would have a computer there to look up their name and address and make sure that that was legitimate. And we put it on the record and then we would answer those questions and then we had a printout of those questions. So it was like a virtual meeting within a meeting and so.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, so we were recognized for that. And this is Concord's first time winning that, so that's, that's pretty neat.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, it was great.
So are there additional questions or comments about the budget? Thank you very much. And so as you, when's, when does this go to press? Is it a couple of weeks or?
When do we go out of draft?
It's in the next two weeks.
So we should, we should have it online version on February 4th. And we should have transportation on February 11th, two days before finance committee.
Thank you, John. All right, that's, that's great. All right, so the next item on our agenda is a review and approval of the town meeting warrant. So the, Madam Moderator, good evening.
Good evening, Carmen Reed, 82 Witten, Town.
So let me explain to everyone the process so far. So the warrant opens and warrants are constructed and the warrant closes and warrant articles are certified by the town clerk. And then we begin the process of getting the warrant organized for town meeting. The moderator and I met a while ago to sort of see if we could take a first blush at just sort of bunching things up. And the kinds of things we were trying to do was first, you might recall that this year, our meeting and Carlisle's town meeting same day. And what we worked out with the school folks in various towns is they're going to go to Carlisle for the regional budgets on Monday. So we wanted to then move all the school warrant articles onto Tuesday. That was that. We had a number of citizen petition articles. Some of them were, for lack of a better word, freestanding, that is not sort of connected to some other subject. But there were a few articles that were kind of like planning articles and things like that. So what we tried to do was we tried to take those petition articles that seemed to be related to sets of other articles and bunch them together. And Carmen, I can't remember another criterion that we.
So, so there is the perennial question of what goes last, because nobody wants to go last and nothing deserves to go last, but something must go last. And we have had suggestions from, from some quarters that it's too important, zoning is too important to put away at the end because it has such an impact on people's lives in town. And then we've had suggestions from other quarters that the enterprise funds are too rich and important and to leave those to last, even though many of them end up on the consent calendar, but we always hear at least one of them. And it's also, it, it could be considered cruel and unusual punishment for the staff member who has to stay till 11 o'clock on the third night, so. So, so, but, so, so it's a difficult, it's a difficult exercise. And I, I would say that trying to figure out, without doing special scheduling, which I don't like to do, I'd rather see us just go in the order of the warrant. It's hard to, there really isn't any way we can guarantee to the schools that they will start and finish on Tuesday. So I think the order of the warrant, as the chair and I discussed it, is highly likely to ensure that the schools will go on Tuesday, but they might not finish on Tuesday. And if we had a crystal ball, we could do better.
So subsequent to our meeting then, I interacted with the town manager's office to produce a version of the warrant. And then on Tuesday, 21st, I think, moderator, town manager, Linda Jane, and town council, I don't know if somebody else was there, Kate, were you there too? Kate met, I wasn't traveling, unfortunately couldn't be there, to review the order of the articles. I think there were a few changes that were made. And then subsequent to that, the planning board met on that evening and they reviewed what we had done and they made a request to reorder the planning articles. And I have the emails that I'll send this to you. This is, all this is for the audience, is an email that was sent to me by a member of the town manager's staff, reporting what the, what the planning board had requested. And the gist of it, which we'll go over in a moment, is just they didn't like the order of it. And I can understand a little bit why, because there's a few that are, you know, not really simple little zoning kind of things, but are really, not just zoning, but connected to broad initiatives being taken in the town. And I think the idea was, let's get those up there. So that's where we are tonight. We have a copy of the warrant here with us. And I don't know about the rest of you, I have reviewed it. There are a few edits that I would make.
Still.
A few edits that I would suggest, but there's some, Carmen, you can tell me because I, there are a couple, in a citizen petition, there are two spelling mistakes. And I wonder, we don't have the authority to change.
I think we discussed that.
Well, something is, something that's purely ministerial, that doesn't change the substance at all, a typo.
Yeah.
Literally a typo, a misspelling. We can consult with the citizen petitioner and if it's all right with them, we can fix the spelling error. There were two citizen petitioners that I did consult with about fixing spelling errors, typos in their warrant articles, and they were both fine.
Okay, well, that's the nature of this one is.
Right, but any, any substantive change would really, we can't do at this point. It would have to be done by amendment on the floor and it would have to be within the scope of the.
Of course. No, no, these are just literally.
But I think it's okay to spell things correct.
I think that's okay. So I can, the others are really just literally editorial errand there on warrant articles, so I would just give those corrections. Nothing is of substance, given the fact. So you have the warrant in front of you. Does anybody have a question or a concern about the, first we're going to ask the order as it is. And then if there are no questions then, I'm going to go to the planning board. Do you want a copy of this?
No, it's okay, I have, I have the order here.
No, this is the email.
I know, I have this in the file.
Then we'll go back to the planning board's request and see if there's agreement to reorder the articles as they suggest. Any, any questions about the order outside of the order of the planning? I don't see any.
Having observed the planning board, this makes total sense in, in terms of.
But let's get first, make sure there's no other adjustments that we need to make to the warrant, so.
And I think everyone will note, for example, that neither the zoning articles nor the enterprise funds are last this year.
Right. I think the ones you picked for last were good choices.
Well, it's not.
Nobody wants to go last.
Always deserves to be last, yes.
It's not the, it's not the unpaid bills and debt, they're always the last. I think the major one that is late, shall we say, are, is the, I thought it was Community Preservation Act. That usually winds up being on a Tuesday and I suspect this time it'll be on a, on a Wednesday. All right, seeing no objections to the order of the warrant, then I'll turn your attention to the planning board request. And so as you can, as you can see, essentially what they want done is they want the accessory dwelling unit article to lead off their set of zoning. And I don't, I think that's correct. I mean, I think that's a good, good idea. So what I would like is, if you're ready, is I would like a motion to accept the changes in the warrants outlined on the email that I just distributed to you. If you're agreeable to that.
Do we need to discuss each of these or just as a whole?
I think we can do it just as a whole. It's written down, they're all numbered. It's perfectly.
And they're all the same articles, so just.
Right, we haven't changed an article, we're just ordering.
So if there's no objection, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So move, move that we reorder the articles per the request of the planning board that fall under their jurisdiction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, terrific. All right, then, are there any, the warrant is an important item, so I'll just ask if there is a public comment about the warrant. Madam Moderator, your, yes, we do have one. You know where you have to go.
My apologies, Mr. Chair, this is Carlin Reed, 83 Witten. Because I don't have a copy of that planning board article, is it possible you could give us just a very quick correlation between old and you just run down the numbers of what it was and looking for the planning board?
I'd like me to give you this.
But I think she's suggesting it for the viewing audience.
For people listening and such, appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, I will read it for you, that's fine. Thank you for the suggestion. So they asked that the accessory dwelling unit, which was listed in the handout as Article 39, be changed to Article 32 and hence would become the first planning board article. The two-family dwelling unit, which was Article 32, will be now Article 33. The PRD article, which was Article 36, will now be Article 34. The Hammerhead Lots article, which is Article 37, would become Article 35. Relief from parking, which is Article 34, will change to Article 36. The Thorough Depot map, now Article 33, would become Article 37. The fares article, Article 39, there would be no change. And prohibited use.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, Article 38.
What did I say?
You said 39.
You said 39.
Oh, I meant to say 38, and there would be no change. And then the prohibited use, which is now Article 35, changes to Article 39. Does that do it for you? All right, if you want, there's a copy up here, if you want, not have to take it, have to come get it. All right, any other comments or questions about the order of the warrant? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
To approve the 2020 annual town meeting warrant, as discussed, subject to minor edits, as deemed necessary by the select board chair, town manager, and/or town council.
So second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And thank you to your staff for all the hard work they did, and the moderator for your help in getting us through this, we really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is committee liaison reports.
On the 14th, there was a middle school building committee forum at Sanborn. It was up, one of, there's going to be another one in February, and it's an opportunity for any interested citizen to ask questions or make comments. It was quite well attended, and there were a good number of this building committee members were there, so it was good input. The audience said that they were hoping for visuals, but were not to that point yet, so, but they had a lot of comments about their thoughts about what the school should be. On the 16th, then, the building committee met, and is going to meet again on the 6th. Now, we're getting to the point where timelines are starting to be developed. So on the 6th, the committee will be discussing options for town, special town meeting, when it's going to go on, then it has to be followed by a ballot. And there are all these dates that back up from that to the opening of the warrant that we would do when the date is decided. One of them is three months before, this information has to be submitted to the Secretary of State, because if, so anyhow, there was, that's what we're going to be talking about, and that's very important, and you can see it on, I don't think it's broadcast live, but it will be on the cable television. There was a correspondence from a citizen who felt strongly, or a group of citizens who felt strongly that there should be a presence from the, I'm not going to get this right, the special ed parents advisory council, they thought should be represented on the committee, so I'm sure that'll come up at the next meeting. There was, this is da-da-da-da, first meeting of the Economic Vitality Committee was on the 22nd. A lot of good conversation, and it was a really good group. All but two of the members were able to attend. We're going to be meeting the fourth Wednesday of the month from 12 to 1:30 here, except for April, which is a different date because of town meeting and school vacation, that will be April 15th. I want to just go back to the building committee. First, the first, league first Friday this month, or February 7th, is going to focus on this middle school building process, and what education looks like in the 21st century for middle school children. So that will be at the Congregational Church in West Concord, across the street from Fowler, at...
915.
915, thank you. And then the last thing I have, we all got a very nice letter from the Concord Museum. They're doing an exhibition that starts in August in recognition of the 100th anniversary of suffrage, and they'll have a lot of, a lot of items in their exhibit, but they're also going to do a, it'll be like a video, I think, of current people, women in Concord who are involved in business, or are, the whole spectrum. So they invited the four women on the select board to be, have, be photographed and be part of that. So we're needing, I mean, I responded, I think we're all in agreement, we just have to sort it out, but that's quite an honor.
And Linda suggested...
Sorry, Mike.
You can come if you want.
Yeah, you can come.
You'll have to wear a dress or something, I don't know.
Oh, my wife was asked to do it, so...
Yeah, so she, okay.
You can come and applaud.
Yes.
And Linda suggested that we do it here.
I was gonna, yeah, I could follow up with them on that. So, I know you're thrilled to hear that.
I think it's great.
I'm sorry.
The date for that, so that those...
To be determined.
To be determined, right.
Yes, in the next, we'll have plenty of time for wardrobe and makeup.
Oh, dear.
All right, Linda.
I attended a meeting at First Parish with Tammy Covea and Jonathan Heck, who is the representative from Waterton. And I mention it here tonight because it was an extremely informative meeting in terms of the challenges and realities of trying to work legislation through the process at the State House. Very interesting, very interesting. I also attended a session of the 229 Main Street Community Meeting, and Marcia Rasmussen and our Stephen Crane were there as well. There were a number of different actors, either from EPA, from the State Department of Environmental Protection, from DeMaximus that's doing, has the contract for the cleanup at that site. And they spent a great deal of time outlining the summary of remedial design work plan and the remedial design schedule, content and schedule. We are going to be hearing more about that at our February 10th meeting. I will be sending out some supplementary material to the rest of the board members in advance of that meeting, because they have such a short time on the agenda, and there's a lot of background information, technical background information, that'll be helpful to all of you, I think. On February, okay, I attended the preliminary preview of the draft warrant, as we already talked about. Also, the, I happened to go to the planning board meeting, because I was specifically interested in the modeling presentation for 59, I believe it's 59 Walden Street, the empty bank that sits there. And there was audience, good audience participation in that presentation. I also attended the Hatz meeting in Lincoln the other night, and Liz Russ happened to be the speaker there, talking about a number of different initiatives and approaches that surrounding towns are using to meet the affordable housing challenge. So that was very interesting. I want to bring to everyone's attention that on February 27th, which is a Thursday night at 7 o'clock in Lincoln, at the Lincoln Town House, the next Hatz meeting is going to be featuring Lisa Wieland, who is CEO of Massport. And so for all the transportation activities that are, that we're talking about, that would be good for people to attend that and hear what happens.
What was that date again?
February 27th at 7:00 PM at the Lincoln Town House. And that does it for this week.
I just have one thing that I forgot to mention, in the, when transportation triggered it, and one of the main, main topics that the Economic Vitality Committee spoke about was transportation being a part of that, so perhaps when that committee gets formed, we can either have someone observe it from that board, or have some connection in some fashion.
Could I also add one thing? That is, the REC committee, REC Commission is looking for members, and I think they, it's not only people who are interested in the school age programs, but adult programs as well. And I think they could also benefit from expertise in marketing and business planning, so consider the REC Commission for volunteer service.
All right, good commercial.
Okay, so on the 14th, I attended the capital planning meeting, things are moving along. There's a March 2nd public hearing that we're preparing for. We'll be talking about the goals of the task force, what the current capital planning process is, some kind of draft recommendations that we're going to make. But the most important thing is, we really want public input. So that's on March 2nd.
Where and what, what time?
I think 7 o'clock, and I don't know where it is, but probably this building, but I'll find out. And we're definitely looking for public input on the capital planning process. I also attended, that same day, the meeting Linda was talking about with Tammy Covea and the other rep, and it really opened my eyes to, I have enormous respect for, now for the legislators and what they have to go through. It was just amazing listening to that, and all the roadblocks that they deal with. On the 18th, I went to the League of Women Voters Breakfast, there was an excellent speaker on the women's suffrage, and the whole history of it in 1920, and it's so applicable to today, it's amazing. On the 21st, I had the opportunity to hear Versini Percocci, who was the leader of the Sunrise Movement. She was born in Emerson Hospital here and grew up in Acton, so it was a very, very excellent meeting. It was at Willard, it was standing room only, it was a really, really good meeting. And last, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, we'll be looking for two or three new members, so we're really trying to recruit some people next spring. There's plenty of work still to be done there, because we have to finish going over Route 2, and then going the other way down to Sudbury.
Thanks, and I too attended, I'll take these a little out of order, the League of Women Voters Annual Breakfast, and, which was, the discussion was, the moderator or the, the lead speaker was the author and director of a new musical on the women's suffrage movement, and it's wonderful to see. I hope, I hope there's a connection between what the museum's doing and that effort, because there's a lot of really great, I know that I was sorry that my children weren't in town, and have peppered them with information since. On, let's see, on the 15th, I was at the Climate Action Advisory Board meeting. There's still some work to be done by the committee in terms of assessing out their priorities, but they certainly are taking an active role in doing that, moving towards the conclusion of the report that is currently underway under a separate grant, and focused on, it's an interesting compilation. The committees' charge and goals and the town sustainability office's charging goals overlap wonderfully and support each other. I think it's just sometimes, it's a challenge for the process. The, I was, I was sad that I could not be at the Willard meeting with the Sunrise Movement, since my daughters are both active in it, but I was at the Board of Health meeting with many television stations, where our Board of Health voted to wait until June 1st after the recently announced regulations from the governor had been able to be, be felt and move forward before they take the next step in terms of what Concord's goals might be if Concord chooses to go beyond just vaping and go into all combustibles. This is a discussion, for those who aren't following this, of how, where the Board of Health is interested in taking our regulations on not just vaping products, but also on tobacco products. So that was a, I think a rather shorter meeting than many who came had expected. And then I was at a recent NRC meeting, which was interesting, as they all are, but not necessarily notable.
So Jean, you're saying they're waiting until June 1st to see what happens, and then they're going to discuss it again?
Yes, there's, it's not just discuss it again, they're going to decide, they're going to start the process of deciding what they want to go forward with, if indeed they do.
Got it.
Thank you. As I mentioned, I was traveling, but before I left, I was able to attend the Martin Luther King, a celebration at the high school on 15th, it was really cool. Appreciate that, that was a very, very nice event. All right, then, next we have no committee nominations, but we do have committee reappointments.
Committee reappointments, Jim Terry of 368 College Road, Lee Smith of 1836 Main Street, Linda Miller of 300 Main Street, Holly Darzen of 155 Heath Bridge Road, and Keith Bergman of 56 White Avenue, to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee for terms to expire May 31st, 2020. And this is an extension of their existing term.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is so they'll be available at town meeting.
Right, and the immediate follow-up, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.